I'd like to call this April 25, 2024 Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Onagastu, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Stavcek?
Here.
And Mrs. Howson?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on our agenda is our strategic priorities. Our district has developed and is currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan, which reflects the values, beliefs, and hopes of our students, staff, parents, and community. Of our four strategic priorities, one of them is transforming teaching and learning. And during today's agenda, we will be adopting a handful of new textbooks that will go a long way towards furthering that goal. Next on our agenda is OSBA student achievement. Mrs. Kilbane and Ms. Stavcek.
Haley and I went to visit Kinsner Elementary. It was great. We had a lot of fun. And right now, I'm going to introduce the principal, Lou Marconi. He's going to come up and introduce his nominations for this year's OSBA.
I want to thank the board for this opportunity. When they first came over, they got to experience Kinsner in all of its glory. And I think one of the things that really stood out to me was the eagerness and the willingness and the heart behind this award, so I want to say thank you. I think that it brings a lot of joy. I got to witness that firsthand. And I'm excited to bring this memory to the families, so I appreciate that. Well, they do too. So I want to first recognize Lucas Young. Lucas, come on up. Stand up here. Lucas is a first-grade student at our school. So the way that this award was rolled out is we sent out a survey to all of our teachers. And we had a number of nominations. And Lucas's nomination really, really stood out and hit the heart. So I wanted to read what a staff member wrote about Lucas. "Lucas is the go-to guy when anything needs accomplished. He's always ready to help, and he's always following direction. Leads by example, showing Kinsner pride. While all of this is important, the main reason that I'm recommending him is because of his inclusivity. He's kind and patient and inclusive with all students. There's a peer in his grade who's often eager to help, and Lucas will stand with him, model how to complete the task, and allow him to try. He's patient, and he never tries to take over. And he's not punitive. I'm so proud of him, and I love having him at lunch, recess, and kids on the run." And that nomination is just, it speaks volumes of Lucas and his character and the family and the upbringing. And I think it really ties well to our Model Mustang trait. So I wanted to recognize Lucas and give him a round of applause.
Thank you. Football, baseball, and basketball.
You were on a winning team last year or something. Football? And what they called you, the Kobe Bryant of the team?
Football.
They said that he was like Kobe Bryant, and he's like a legend. He was football, so he's very famous.
Do you want to get a picture? Do you want to get a picture with your family?
Okay.
You've got to be in the middle, see how you look.
All about you.
You know why?
An honor to be chief of this.
Lucas, we're very proud of you.
The award also, we have a staff member award as well. And the staff member that was selected this year is Mary Marconi. So Mary? Mary had several nominations, which is, which really made her stand out above the other nominees. And I selected one of the several nominations that she had, just to read to you today. It says, "Mary Marconi is one of the busiest people at Kinsner. She always greets everyone with a hello and a smile. She's often seen doing numerous tasks at once, yet will take the time to answer your question immediately or follow up and get back with you. Her willingness helps make our jobs easier. Her positive interactions with students, parents, and staff are apparent and refreshing. She goes above and beyond and helps our large school run smoothly each day." And if it's anything that I have noticed, I come from a school that had about 450 students, so this one's close to 650. But to watch Mary kind of orchestrate the day-to-day interactions and then keep the same attitude, even at 2 o'clock on a Wednesday or a Thursday, it's nothing short of remarkable. So Mary, we're very lucky to have you, and I appreciate all the work that you do for our school.
Thank you.
One thing we noticed is that Mary is located right by the front door, where we were not aware that orchestra and band meet to have their practices. So she gets serenaded while doing her work on a daily basis. And she was able to tell us how improved the students got since the beginning of the year, when they had instruments in their hand, and how patient the teachers are and the instructors are in band and orchestra for having the patience to teach the students this. So she gets to witness that firsthand and have that noise in the background while she's trying to be productive. It's music. It's music. But sometimes when they're first learning and they're eager to make noise.
It's music.
It's music. But yeah, so she does that all at the same time. So it's really impressive that she can multitask, and she was so happy about it. Normally, people would be like, "Oh, my gosh, every day I keep listening to Hot Cross Buns." And she loved it.
So I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate once again Lucas and Mary. Being a model and taking the time to come to our board meetings allows us to spread that word farther than just Kinsner. And if other people watching it can see what a great job Lucas is doing and what a great job Mary's doing, they can set their minds to doing great jobs also. And I kind of like the go-to guy. That's definitely something to live up to. So thank you very much, and we appreciate it. Next on our agenda is public comment. I do have one from Bonnie Tennis. You know the drill, Bonnie. Name an address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Yep. My name is Bonnie Tennis, 9407 Bradford Lane. Well, I missed many meetings because of the levies. I didn't want to comment on anything that would influence the levies. So I have a lot to say, but I only have three minutes, so I have to pick some things, but I leave it for next time and another time. So I would like to say the second half of last year was really challenging, and it's not over yet. I watch every meeting. I look at every report. And all the finances and all the stuff that was going on, it's almost like it's affecting me personally because I see what is going on. And I see, I mean, from the resident's point of view, what could be improved or how could be done differently, maybe so the levy would pass, and then other things could happen. So let me start with this. Because, you know, it starts with the presentation that was state of the schools on March of 2023, what was presented, the five-year forecast, with a very positive outlook. One of the things to celebrate is that line right there, "We are in the strongest financial position that we've ever been, at least in almost 20 years. I've been part of this district, working together," that's not from me, that's what was quoted. "Together, we're not trying to just get by, but thriving and being able to invest back in our students." So in May 2019, when we passed this last levy, we made a commitment and a promise to our community and said, "If we pass this levy, we will be financially stable through the '26-'27 school year. We are not only going to meet the benchmark, but exceed the benchmark for many years to come." That forecast showed deficit of $0.9 million and over $72 million in cash reserves in 2027. And after 2027 was all positive. There was no deficit. So then came September. March looked promising, and just six months later, district was in trouble. Starting 2025 fiscal year, district going to deficit spending. In just six months, there was about $22 million increase to the forecast from fiscal year '23 to '27. But it looks like it might increase again because September and November, '23 forecast indicates that SR-2 and SR-3 positions are not included in the five-year forecast. And here's what is quoted in there in Major Assumptions Expenditure Section states. "In fiscal year '25 and beyond, the forecast assumed 25 additional positions coming onto the general fund as SIR funds will expire for these positions." So if this is not included in the current forecast, then starting fiscal year 2025, expenditures will increase by additional $2 million or more millions of dollars, which will increase the deficit spending from that year on. So instead of $2.2 million in '25 would be $4.2 million, $2026, $7.2 million, $2027, $9.3, and $2028, $11. But how realistic is that $2026, $2027, and $2028, when for '23, the increase was $6.7, and for 2024 will be a past of 7%? And increases for '26, '27, '28 are a lot less. These are big increases, and it's stated, and it was presented, that with annual inflation increases through October fiscal year-to-date, expenditures are 6.45% higher than the previous year and 14.69% higher compared through September of 2022. So just seeing that deficit in September, it really gave me a bad feeling. I mean, I get really, you know, it was so good, and suddenly it looks bad. So, but then in addition to that, when the issue for renewal levy was posted on the website, it says to us, it was posted that, "As a government entity, our school district is required to operate in positive. Operating in deficit could result in the following declaration, both for our Department of Education, we know what fiscal caution, fiscal watch." Now, that's like, what happened to that, "We are not going to meet that benchmark, but exceed it benchmark for many years to come?" I'm thinking, what just happened? Why is that directed to us, to the residents? Like somehow, we are responsible for it, and if you don't pass the levy, there will be consequences. How can that be? This district has $71 million in reserves, and we still in trouble. We were in trouble in 2019 with $30 million in reserves, and we have $71 million in reserve, $40 million more, and we still in trouble. In a short period of time, district was almost in the same situation as was in 2019. That is spending every year, starting fiscal '25. There is more cash in reserves than it was in 2019. But what I've learned from Mr. Treasurer, that the amount of cash does not matter. What matters is the deficit spending, and that is what's happening in Medina. So now, when it comes now to that 070 font, I was really surprised that instead of offsetting the cost for elementary school, it was used for things that were removed from the original font purpose, like athletic facilities. When purpose was discussed on March 9, '23, Mr. Miko said, "So the things I would like also to support to consider in the first couple of things, starting with that first paragraph, elementary school, athletic facilities, performing arts, I would like to collapse that." I think it's a further conversation with public if we're talking about athletic facilities or performing arts center. But during the State of Schools '24, superintendent addressed the needs and wants. Needs were the elementary schools, but here are the wants. We want to build athletic fieldhouse. We want to upgrade our performing arts facilities. And we want to turf our basketball fields and so, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. So last year, it was quote, again, it said that last year about this time, all the way through the summer of, we had 100 community members and staff members got together and say, "Which is the vision for the future of facilities in Strongville Schools?" I don't think 100 community members should decide what rest of the resident wants. Athletic fieldhouse will need security, support services, lots of maintenance. The districts can hardly keep up with the buildings that has, that it has, adding facility would put even bigger strain on taxpayers. The needs were the elementary school, the ones needed to wait. We are all affected by the current inflation. We all struggle to adjust our expenses. Districts should not be spending money on things that are not important and not needed at this time. What was important were the elementary schools. I wish this administration and Board of Education would take a different approach in 2023, 2024. There were four things on the table in one year, which were potential tax increases, expenditures increases, which led to deficit spending starting 2025, bond levy talks, teachers' contract, and renewal levy, all when Calhoun County property reappraisal is taking place. Last year, district should stick to expenditures increases, increases close to what was presented in March 2023. 15% increase in the last two years was a lot. Offer a few less extracurricular activities, especially when there is a problem with space. Just go with the elementary schools without the fieldhouse and without new offices, and take that $25 million and put toward the elementary schools. Explain to residents, say, "Yes, there is an extra cash built in, but it will be applied toward the elementary schools to reduce the bond levy amount. Offer smaller teachers' salary increase. This last contract had the highest increase since 2015, 2.75, which the raised step increases can go up to 12.3%, and educational steps can go up to 17.9%." Unless, the way that renewal levy was handled by the school district and other four Strongsville levy websites, it's not what was presented, but how it was presented. It was all one-sided. There was not a room for compromise. Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm nervous. I'm going to get better.
Bonnie?
Yes.
I want to thank you for keeping it within three minutes. That was a joke.
Well, thank you for letting me finish.
I agree.
Because it was, like I said, many meetings on this, but...
But I appreciate, I appreciate your passion. I appreciate the fact that you bring us good facts. As usual, I usually, I always say that public comment is the time for the board to use its ears, not its mouth. If you could share your document with us, I'd like to read it again. I always appreciate your emails, and thank you for taking the time.
I have, I reset PDF, but I wanted to talk about this before, so you know what I'm talking about.
Thanks again. I do have one other slip. Stacy Race?
Raid.
Raid.
All right, so I'm a resident, so...
So again, your name and address. You have approximately three minutes, and our job is to listen.
All right. My name is Stacy Raidy. I live in 20714 Forestwood Drive, Strongsville, Ohio. I have two children here in the school district. For eight years, they started both out at Wishingwell. I have one at Maraski. I have one in the middle school. For a number of years, there's been issues going on in the schools. A lot of them have been resolved. But I'm here today, not just because of my kids, but for everybody out there, all these hundreds of families that are having their children's... I don't know if you guys realize the degree of stuff and bullying that's going on in the schools. It is unreal. It is absolutely unreal. I know people that have their kids going homeschooled because of it. It's out of control, and I don't know where else to turn. So I'm turning to you guys for help. Because you guys are the ones that rule the school. You guys are the people that make things go smoothly, and it's not going smoothly. And I'm looking for serious help, not just for my family, other families. I literally, in my neighborhood alone, I can list six different families that are having issues in levels of all the schools. And it's increasing with parents. It's increasing with me. You know, I've had my child, one of my children, for three years asking to be homeschooled. I almost ripped her out of her elementary school this year. Luckily, that did not happen because finally, things got changed. But still, it's always one thing after another, and problem after problem keep coming. And it's out of hand, and it needs to be addressed, seriously. Because these kids are going to end up starting killing themselves or shooting up people, and it's ridiculous. And that's exactly where it's heading, from the stories that I'm hearing. And it scares the heck out of me. Because the last thing I want to hear is something's going on in this school system that's on lockdown, and your kid or your kid or somebody's, you know, uh-uh. I can't. I can't anymore. And it's sad. I mean, this world has changed since I went to school a lot. And I know there's a lot of new parameters and things that are involved, but something needs to be done. Something, I'm begging you guys to please look into this stuff. I will be more than happy to talk to anybody that wants to talk to me on their own basis. But something seriously needs to be done. Because I know parents that have addressed things with teachers and principals, and they're not getting responses back, which is 100% inappropriate. That right there is a huge problem. That is, that is the beginning of the disservice, right there. So that's pretty much the basis of why I'm here. Any questions? Asking me? If you'd like to talk to somebody after, if that's possible. Because I just don't know what else to do, and I don't, I don't see it getting better. So, thank you.
I appreciate you taking the time. We have your contact information. Unfortunately, we do have a long meeting planned.
That's fine.
But we owe you a response. And I know, I speak for everyone. We are aware, we're parents, we're a board, we're staff, we're teachers. We're aware of the issues that our students are facing, just as well as our parents are. So please work with us. Please communicate with us, and we will communicate with you.
I have for years.
And I don't, I don't want that to sound like it's just...
Sloughing me off?
Yeah. I'm serious.
I understand. You have to understand, though, I've kind of been sloughed off with the school system.
And that's what we want to, we want to address a second time. Give us the opportunity, and we'll work with you. Because we want the same thing for all of our children.
And that's all I want. And all my kids want to do is to be left alone. If people don't like them, they don't care. They just want to be left alone. And when you're going to school and you don't know what you're walking into every day, it's a crap fest, you know? And they don't, these kids don't feel safe at school anymore, you guys. It's scary. It's really scary.
So thank you for taking the time to visit.
You're welcome.
And we will follow up with you. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. That is part of our consent calendar motion. Never understand why it says "motion" to approve.
I just changed it.
It's part of our consent calendar.
I just changed it to consent.
Well, that's why I don't understand it. So it is part of our consent calendar, the April 11, 2024 work session. Minutes, all district audio and video are permanent part of the minutes. Next is our treasurer's report. George, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first being the monthly financial report for March 31, 2024. And I'm going to go over the supplemental report that's attached to the agenda. So through March, our current year-to-date revenue collections indicate about $1.1 million favorable compared to the forecast. Our expenditures are about $136,000 favorable compared to the forecast, which the potential net impact would result about $1.2 million favorable impact on our cash balance. And that would result in a $3.8 million carryover from, with revenues exceeding, revenues over expenditures. Looking at revenues for March compared to last March, they are up $6.7 million, but it's more or less to do with a timing of the property tax settlement. If you recall from February, February was down by about $6 million due to the county signing out the, or not signing out, but they extended the deadline for the property tax bills a week later, which impacted the February advance, which impacted the settlement. So as you'll see below, for fiscal year-to-date collections, property tax revenues about $520,000 higher than it was last year. And then state revenues about $15,000 less than it was last March. And again, that's timing on how last year the annual amount was distributed. And then all other revenues about $20,000 less in March compared to last March. And that had to do with, we received tuition. Twice a year, we receive tuition from students that are court-placed, court-placed or other means within the district. And we receive tuition back from their residential districts. So that was about, that was, that amount was less this year compared to previous years. Year-to-date through March compared to last March, as I mentioned, property taxes were about $520,000 higher. The collection rate was slightly higher compared to last year, which contributed to that increase. State revenue is about $373,000 higher, which is part of the biennium budget, that the foundation was increased within the biennium. And all other revenues about $800,000 higher, of which, of which $712,000 is due to interest. Revenue being, being higher, we're currently at $1.9 million compared to $1.2 million through last March. And then in September, we received about $175,000 in Medicare reimbursement that would have normally been received in the last fiscal year in June, which was delayed. So that was more of a timing. So overall, through the fiscal year, about $1.7 million higher compared to last March. How it's trending against the forecast, we're about $1.1 million higher. Part of that increase is the property tax collections were about $643,000 higher than was forecasted. And then state revenues about $69,000. If we look in state revenues in the box below for unrestricted aid, as part of the state revenues, and unrestricted aid, unrestricted aid's about $198,000 less. That was trending that way since January. But the restricted aid has increased to $267,000. That's going to be, $243,000 of that is going to be received next month. Or actually, when I say next month, in April, for, we just received it last week. For April, we received it. It was unexpected. It was a reimbursement back for ELA textbooks. The state is mandating a new adoption for the science of reading. You'll see the expenditures and the curriculum budget under the textbooks that we buy. The total cost for those textbooks are about $1,058,000, but we are getting back $243,000 from the state that neither, neither of those expenses were part of the forecast, nor was the revenue or the expense associated with that. So that's the changes in revenue, and that would be about 1.24% difference compared to the November forecast. Moving on to expenditures. Expenditures for March compared to last March were about $497,000 higher. That's primarily made up in salaries and benefits, which represent $363,000. And then fiscal year-to-date, we're about $3.2 million higher or 5.4% higher compared to last year through fiscal year-to-date. That's primarily made up in salaries and benefits, which is $3.2 million higher. Purchased... made up in salaries and benefits, which is $3.2 million higher. Purchase services is about $200,000 higher. Um, other expend, other expenditures is about $235,000 less, but as the years, as the year goes on, uh, with the textbook adoption, um, that'll, that number will be higher compared to last year. And then how expense, expenditures are comparing to the forecast, um, we're about $136,000 favorable or under. Uh, salaries and benefits are about $800,000 less. Um, we do have a lot of turnover in positions this year, uh, which contributed to salaries savings, benefit savings. Um, purchase services are trending about $67,000 less. And then all other expenditures, uh, primarily, um, material supplies is gonna, uh, with the textbooks, it's gonna be $727,000 higher, uh, compared to the forecast. Um, and the breakdown is, the, the primary difference is the textbooks addition. Um, so the textbooks is gonna be about $1.3 million higher, um, compared to the forecast. Uh, we had budgeted originally, so, um, originally we had budgeted and forecasted $600,000 for textbook adoptions. Uh, with the current textbook adoptions that we were planning for this year, um, the cost has gone up, and those amounts increased by 200,000, so we're looking at 800,000 for the original textbooks adoptions, uh, that we were looking at this year. And then with, uh, ELA mandate from the state, um, Aaron can talk a little bit more about it, but, um, it was for ELA mandated adoption for the science of reading that we must adopt by the end of next school year. Uh, with, that cost us about 1.5, or 1,058,000. Um, so with that amount, plus the additional amount for the current adoption, the 200,000, that's where the 1.3 million is coming from. And then that was offset against, uh, we had a transfer in the general fund built in to transfer to the PI fund for Kinsner, the HVAC system. Uh, but that is currently being looked at within the critical needs plan with the O7O fund. So, using, that savings to offset part of the textbook costs. And that 136,000 makes up about a 0.2% difference in the forecast. Um, the next board meeting, May 9th, uh, we'll be presenting an updated five-year forecast to the board during the work session to be adopted and may be submitted to the Department of Education. Any questions on the financial report? Moving on in the next section, uh, student activity program budget revision for fiscal year '24. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following student activity program budget revision for fiscal year '24 be approved. Uh, the MD vocational training, uh, which is student, district managed student activity account, which is the Derby, uh, increased from 50,0710 to 65,0254, and the increase is primarily due to the activity that, um, the activity and the volume that the Derby is receiving. Um, more student groups are having the Derby do their T-shirts for their student activity groups and other various, um, organizations as well. So, they're seeing more volume, which is giving those kids additional experiences. Fiscal year '24, uh, moving on, item three, fiscal year '24 amended appropriations. Uh, there are several appropriation adjustments that are listed on the exhibit, just to quickly highlight them. Um, as mentioned with the textbook adoption, um, I was able to sweep some money to make up the difference that wasn't budgeted from salary and benefit savings and also part of the Kinsner HVAC system. Uh, but I still needed additional amount to increase the appropriation of 545,000 for the general fund for the textbooks. Um, item B for permanent improvement fund, an increase of 626,000. Uh, the cash was available on the PI fund, uh, but it just wasn't appropriated, and that was for the chiller that was approved for the high school at the last board meeting. And then, um, the student activity account for the Derby, uh, Fund 451, we received additional grant dollars. And then, uh, Fund 499, uh, we received the Attorney General's safety grant for this fiscal year in the amount of 24,680, which is appropriated. And then Title I funds, a reduction of 26,000. That, that was just a reallocation from the state. Item four, the tax rate resolution, and this is an annual item. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the resolution accepting the amounts and the rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying to the county auditor be approved. Um, if you recall from the organizational meeting, we present a tax budget. That tax budget is submitted to the county auditor's office. Um, their next step is to generate the tax rate resolution, uh, which we need to submit back by the end of this month. And the, this is the tax rates for the upcoming calendar year, uh, tech, which is calendar year 2025, tax year '24, collection year '25. Um, what's different on this one than in years past? Um, the renewal levy, uh, the county did not put the renewal levy on the tax rate resolution, and that is because the tax rate, the levy technically expires in tax year '23, collection year '24, and this is for '25. So, at this point, it hasn't been renewed, so they did not, they did not put it on. Um, whatever we decide to do for November, um, if anything is approved at that point by the community, um, a new tax rate resolution will be generated at that time and approved by the end of the calendar year. Um, but what this does mean, uh, July 1 is our fiscal, beginning of our fiscal year for 2025. Um, and we'll receive the rest of the renewal levy, uh, for the rest of this calendar year, which will be half of the fiscal year. And then, starting in January 1, um, they'll assume that there's no collections for that. So, we'll start with our certificated estimated resources with half the, half the renewal levy to start the school year. Any questions on that? That was a...
That's not on the consent calendar. We need a motion on that?
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Yes. Is it on the consent?
No, we do need a motion. Sorry.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor be approved. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Colbain. Any discussion? I don't think there's any discussion other than to share that, once again, uh, cons, consequences of, of the levy decision, we're already experiencing them, and, uh, we look forward to the five-year forecast to determine our next steps. To determine the process for our next steps. I think it's probably a better way to say that. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing done. Please take the roll.
Ms. Delcheck?
Yes.
Ms. Colbain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
And then the last item I have for your consideration is district credit card limits. Uh, be, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that per, per Board Policy 6423, the annual credit card limits per cardholder and/or account be approved as listed in the exhibit. Um, if you recall from the last board meeting in, uh, March, uh, we had approved this again. Since that time, uh, we needed one additional credit card for, uh, for DECA. Uh, they had additional kids going. And for their rental car, um, for the advisor, there was an additional advisor that needed to drive, and their names have to be listed on the credit card in order to, uh, rent the vehicle. So, we needed to add an additional credit card for the third advisor. Um, she's not a permanent advisor for DECA, just this trip. So, once, uh, the trip concludes and all the expenses are, uh, paid, we'll close her, we'll close that credit card as well. And, um, and then have the exhibit again at the appropriate time.
So, we can look forward to amending this again?
Potentially, or we might just do it at the...
Not potentially, yes.
At the, well, we'll have to do it at the organizational meeting. So, if there's no further questions, then.
Any other questions for George? So, I will share with the public. I mean, you know, some of this seems, uh, Mickey Mouse or, uh, a rigmarole, but it's how we make sure that we've done everything we can to protect, uh, the district's finances and ultimately the taxpayers' finances. Thanks for your report, George.
Yep, thank you.
Next on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Iba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. We have, uh, one discussion item on the agenda under my section tonight, and that's the master staffing plan. So, just to give some background, um, around the late summer, early fall, we had a board retreat, and we, we talked about, uh, our ESSER funds that will be ending this year. Um, so, over the last three years, we've been allocating the ESSER funds to provide staffing to help the needs of our students, close gaps, uh, based on the pandemic. And so, we started talking about, we need to make decisions as to what happens to these positions after the ESSER funds are gone. Um, and we came to agreement that it would be in the best interest of the district that we create a long-term, uh, master staffing plan that details optimum staffing, uh, levels that can guide, uh, sustainability of our current positions and the creation of positions that are needed to, to meet the evolving needs of our, of our students. So, starting back in December, we, uh, crafted, uh, a, a plan to go ahead and develop this. And we wanted to start with actually talking with the employees that were doing the work in these various groups. So, we took all of our employee groups across the district, placed them into two phases. So, this year, um, we met with all of the positions on phase one, and what you can see on the board there, uh, those are the, uh, 13 position groups that we met with. Uh, the other, we do have positions in the other phase. Uh, we didn't select to meet with them this year because there's other structures and systems in place that give more of an annual review. Uh, so that was a part of it. Um, we felt also that those position groups in phase two were in a good spot, um, with where they were, based on, uh, as I said, uh, other reviews that have been done or structures in place to make sure, uh, that, uh, they are, uh, continuously looked at. So, once we sent this out to all of our staff, we got folks that volunteered to want to be a part of it. We also asked some specific people to be a part of it based on their expertise. Uh, we held focus groups throughout the months of January and February, and predominantly, we asked each of the groups, uh, each of these 13 groups, similar questions. The first one was, what are the skills, uh, that you feel is needed for somebody to meet the demands of your job in 2024 and beyond? Um, once we talked about that, we, we, uh, asked about current challenges that they're experiencing, that they thought could be improved by, uh, improved skillsets of the employees or additional staffing. And then, we specifically asked them, what is your recommendation for optimum staffing levels, uh, for your position in the building, as well as other positions that you experience? And we asked folks to qualify that as, I see this as a must-have, should-have, or a nice-to-have. Um, and then the final question was, hey, uh, you, a lot of people have ideas about positions that currently don't exist in our district. And so, using that same criteria of must, should, and nice-to-have, what are some ideas that you have of positions, uh, that we currently don't have? And so, Jenny and I split those up, and we're facilitators of, uh, these groups. I took half, she took the other half. Uh, and then, uh, our cult team members were a part of those too, uh, based on their area of oversight or interest. Um, and they, uh, took notes and captured all of the feedback, uh, and then we put that all together. Now, when we put that all together, as, as you could see on the board here, we created, um, four criteria, uh, of how we would place these positions. And ultimately, uh, I took the feedback from the staff, I filtered that down, I got feedback from our various departments, and then ultimately, I made the final decision on where I, I believe each of these should be placed. Um, and I placed them into four categories. The first category was maintain current staffing. That means these positions currently exist in our district. They are, uh, doing the work, uh, to help support our students, um, in a variety of ways, and I believe their position should be, uh, maintained, um, moving forward. So, a lot of these are ESSER positions, where the money is, is ending. Um, some of these positions are already factored into the five-year forecast, uh, and then some of these positions are not, and I'll speak more to that here shortly. Um, the second category was add next year. So, what that means is, these are either positions that currently exist that we want to look at the number of days they work or responsibilities they have, as well as, uh, positions that maybe we need more of, uh, that are there. Um, so if we have X amount of this position, we feel we need, uh, another one or two to best meet the evolving needs, uh, of our district. And so, we'll talk, these are not in the five-year forecast at all, so these would be additions to our expenditures as a district if, uh, the board, uh, would support them. Both maintain and add next year, um, are all, uh, recommended to be implemented for the '24, '25 school year, uh, either continuing on or adding new. There's two other categories that, uh, we have positions broken into. However, we are not gonna focus on those tonight because they are not pressing. Um, the next column was add in the future. What that means is, I thought it was a great idea. Um, I think there's merit to it, but based on the prioritization of other needs and other focus areas right now, it's not something I'm looking for '24, '25. But has, uh, again, a long-range staffing plan that says, that says, this would be something that we want to take a look at, uh, as we evolve and grow, uh, as a school district. Um, the column that says different concept, there were some suggestions that made that, uh, I thought had merit, um, but, uh, I, I have a recommendation for a different way to achieve a similar goal. Um, and then there were a number of positions that were shared, and ideas that were shared, uh, that I'm saying at this time, so not next year, not in the next few years, uh, but really not at this time. I wasn't interested in recommending those positions, uh, to the board. Uh, again, based on prioritization, needs, um, and, and focus that I would see in the next three to five years. Um, so what I want to do now, George, if you can, um, click on the maintain current tab. And if we take a look at this, uh, and I'm just going to go through row three, uh, as it, it's an easier one to kind of go through. It's got everything, uh, highlighted. So, the first, uh, the first column is group. So, I grouped them based on the 13 groupings that I met with. So, this says, okay, this, this recommendation is related to an administrative position. I gave the position title as assistant principal. If I need to give further context to describe what that means, I added it for this. We all know what an assistant principal is and does. Um, the, the level or the building for this position would be Kinsner and Maraski. Um, and so, since these are maintaining, we, we added with ESSER funds, an assistant principal at the elementary level that spends halftime at Kinsner, halftime at Maraski. The quantity is, how many of those do we have? That's just one. Uh, maintain current is just kind of how I sorted it. And George, if you can scroll to the right, if you would, or just shrink it down a little bit so we can see the full spreadsheet. Uh, what we took a look at was, what additional costs, uh, would this add to the five-year forecast? And be, where you see those dashes, that means it would not have any additional, it would not have to have any additional cost to the five-year forecast because George already factored this position into the five-year forecast. So, what that's saying is, if we keep the assistant principal position at Kinsner and Maraski, which I am recommending we do, that would not add any expenditures. But to be transparent, if you said no, it would, uh, reduce expenditures. Um, so, to give a highlight here, and, and, and I'm not gonna read every detail, uh, but what we're recommending is that we continue with the summer custodial help. Um, I'm starting with row two, I'm going back up. Uh, that we, we put into place summer custodial help, uh, to, to support all of the room moves and needs and cleaning and, uh, you know, support that's done in, in the summer, uh, that we continue to, uh, have those summer positions. Again, I won't repeat this over and over again, but dashes are there, which means we did that last year, last summer. That'd be no additional cost. Uh, we talked about the assistant principal. Uh, we did add a third assistant principal to the middle school, which we're, we're requesting to maintain. Um, we added a fifth elementary principal, so we have one at every elementary building. Thank you. A fifth couns, school counselor, so we had one at every elementary building. We're recommending to maintain that. Uh, we're recommending to keep, uh, the Kinsner reading, uh, the reading specialist at Kinsner and Sarara. We have five elementary buildings, three of them qualify for Title I services, which provide reading intervention and support. Uh, that is Maraski, Chapman, and Whitney. Uh, this makes sure that every building has reading support for students that are, uh, at risk, based on our diagnostics in reading. Uh, the board approved 15 supplemental contracts, uh, at the elementary level, recommending those stay. Uh, we have a secondary math coach that's been instrumental in how we've completely revamped how we teach mathematics instruction at the secondary level. Look at keeping that. Uh, we added an additional, uh, instrumental music position, uh, that supports both band and orchestra. Uh, that helps to support staffing levels that are appropriate for a district our size. We implemented a, a bus floater position, which is basically a permanent substitute for transportation, so that we can support, uh, absences, um, and medical leaves, and that's been beneficial. The, the next two, we are recommending maintain and an addition. Um, so, the ESSER funds have been used to pay for permanent substitutes. That's been critical for what we've done with the substitute shortage. Um, this past year, we were approved for 11, uh, permanent substitutes. Uh, Jenny, based on her, uh, analysis of that, is recommending we take 11 to 15. Uh, one of the reasons, uh, for that is, uh, if you take a look at our staff, um, our overall staff, I would say it's like an inverse curve. We have folks that are in the start of their career, and we have folks that are at the beginning of their career, for very different reasons. That requires a FMLA leave and medical leaves, whether it's to care for your own health needs or your parents, or whether it's you're having children, uh, and starting a family. Um, so a lot of our permanent substitutes have been utilized to cover for these, uh, FMLA absences, and they've been a, a tremendous help, uh, to, to support. Um, and so, this year, uh, a lot of that 11- And so, this year, a lot of that eleven became long-term subs for these leaves, where we lost that ability to use them for day-to-day as much as we wanted to. The other thing that we're recommending, it's under the same concept, but would be an evolution, is that we would look at adding three permanent intervention specialist subs. So, again, they provide services to our students with disabilities, extremely hard position to fill, having those permanent subs would help to reduce absences or absences not filled with a licensed person, as well as help with those long-term absences for medical needs if if that's the case. We are looking, we do have literacy coaches, we have four literacy coaches across the district, we have one that is retiring. So, Erin and I have been in discussions to look at the coaching levels that we need, and we feel comfortable with only needing three literacy coaches moving forward. So, that is a savings to the to the budget of the five-year forecast that's already in there. We have had through ESER, a special education coach, that has been a tremendous asset to the work we've done, and we're looking to continue to evolve her role and work next year, so we recommend that continues. We have an MTSS coordinator position that we're recommending to continue with. Again, she helps to provide and support an MTSS system at all levels. She's provided great resources and supports at the elementary level and has bolstered that system, and the focus next year would be continue to support the elementary, but really spend time at the middle school and help bolster that system. And then, we have RTI intervention specialists, again, additional support for our our students in special education, otherwise, that that need additional interventions, and we would be looking to maintain the current staffing levels that we had in the past couple of years. So, that covers the positions that we would like to maintain. Mr. Miko and the board, what I'm asking for is guidance on this part of the master staffing plan tonight. You know, we've shared information, the board has had time to to preview it. So, because, A, these positions are current people, and they don't know if their job is secure next year, some of them are already looking for other jobs, and they're great employees, and we want to keep them here. For employees that have been here, and they know if we get rid of their position, they will still have a job, it causes a domino effect in human resources in terms of all the bumping that would happen if they would return back. So, based on those factors and the fact that they're existing positions, I would ask the board to have a discussion, give us guidance on where we can go. If there's any specific positions that you need more time to think about or have questions, we could pull those out and come back at the next board meeting, but of the ones that you're supportive of, your guidance tonight would be appreciated. So, I'll pause there, and then, obviously, there's another part of this we want to talk about, but I figure we do this as a section at a time.
So, I'd like to just start to kind of share, so first of all, the spreadsheet that Cameron shared is just the summary top of it. So, I wanted to compliment and thank Cameron and Jenny and the entire team. There's, there's, for those of us who like data, there's a lot of it. So, that that's a good thing. And at the same time, the approach, the rationale, the way we just sliced and diced it, I thought was a, I I appreciated, and I think everyone appreciated. I did want to share, I read too much, so this was out of, out of The Plain Dealer or Cleveland.com about a month ago. School districts across the country are preparing for budget deficits as their American Rescue Plan Act dollars expire at the end of September, but how well they will fare depends on how much federal aid they received and whether they adequately prepared for its eventual disappearance. The the article goes on and discusses the school districts in Ohio that will have a financial crisis once, once the ESER funds are no longer there. I think it's important that we share that we are not going to have a financial crisis. I, the line that resonated with me was, and whether they adequately prepared for its eventual disappearance. And when this board had to deal with or worked through how we were going to spend the ESER funds, we were very focused that, unlike football stadiums in Texas and other ways to spend ESER funds, the ESER funds needed to address actual student need, they needed to at least, at the very least, attempt, I think it was more than just attempt, but address learning loss, address consequences of the COVID environment. But we also were very cognizant of the fact that this is one-time money. And so, it's a, it is a good thing that we're having the conversation, it's a good thing that we're having the conversation in the financial environment that we have, which means there were certain positions, we knew we were what I like to call moving the coconuts around. When we can pay for them without of ESER funds, we will, but we also recognized that they were things similar, you know, as an example, the elementary supplementals. We knew we were going to want to continue those, and so, there is no impact on the five-year forecast. There's no, we already included that money. Ultimately, the additions, nothing stays stagnant, and I think the additions are recognizing that we need, we continue to have areas that we need to address, and I think they're, they're all reasonable requests. You know, sometimes, I think, as a board, our job is to be the parent, and there's no request a child isn't going to ask that we should spend money on, and sometimes, the parents have to say yes to some and no to others. But I did kind of want to share that, just to kind of start the conversation. Did anybody have any specific questions on the maintain list? I can start, or Michelle can start? I'm going to have Michelle start.
You can start if you want. I just wanted to, I have a couple of things, but I'll start with this one. And so, let me know how you want to play this.
Sure.
My question is about the special education coach as it relates to some of the things that you have on the next year's list.
Okay.
So, let me know if you want me to go into that now, or you want me to wait for...
No, you can go.
Okay. So, as part of the next year, add next year suggestions, we have adding a principal at the preschool, right, which would free up then our Megan Serso and...
The specialized coordinators.
Right. For them, they would each have a grade-level band, correct? So, one elementary, one middle school, one high school. So, that's more support dedicated to one area than we've ever had before. And in the area of special education, does that fill the role of literacy coach, or or not literacy coach, special education coach? Because it's, or do we, is it a separate thing? Like, we're already adding to that area, so I don't want to duplicate the efforts, I guess is what I'm getting at.
So, what I would, what I would say is, I'm going to have Andy come up and talk specifically because he, you know, he's, he's working directly with the special education coach. So, what I would say is, as I've met with all of the special education coordinators, the level of of work that's on their plate right now is everything's sustainable, right, because they're phenomenal employees. But we have to look at the sustainability of that. And so, looking at those different levels, what I would say is, that makes their position more manageable, to be more effective in what is their roles. It doesn't give them so much the opportunity to say, and now, I can take on this additional role because of it. And Andy and I have had lengthy conversations about the focus of the special education coach for next year, so Andy, why don't you kind of give a overview of what your vision is and what I support?
Sure. First of all, that was very well said, that was kind of going to be my opening right there. But we're also looking at the opportunity to expand that person's role in the district, primarily through some concerns across the district in terms of how do we help support teachers with students who are having some behaviors in our, in our buildings. And so, we saw that the opportunity could be the special education coach has a wealth of background knowledge, where they could collaborate with the BCBA and some other key personnel to be direct point of contact within our schools and our district when a teacher feels the need, that they need that support. If people know, hey, I know who to go to to start the process, to get some support, that could be a great avenue for that person, so.
And so, that was a key point of feedback that came out through a lot of our focus groups, was a behavior specialist, or, you know, those areas to provide that support. The the other part of the role that we're looking to lean into more next year is, we, I'm ballparking, how many intervention specialists are we hiring for next year?
I mean, at least, I would say, ten, at least ten, and, you know, last year, we also hired some brand-new ones, too.
So, as we look at that number of new employees, we need somebody to be dedicated to them to onboard, to train, to support. When you take a look at moderate-intensive, mild-moderate classrooms, there's a way you structure that where you set up, and you could have a great college experience, but the the reality of the management and the organization and the instruction of students with moderate-to intense needs is complex. So, those are two main areas of focus that we would utilize her for.
Can you talk a little bit about the position of coach in general? Because in my experience, it seems like it's a newer position, it's a newer idea, that the, is this, you know, you talked about, for example, the math coach. Is this intended to have a beginning, a middle, and end, or is this intended to be forever?
So, I'm going to start, and Erin, if you want to come up to the podium, please, and Jenny, you can jump in, too. So, in terms of the coaching, what I believe, I believe strongly in a, in a culture of coaching and and support that's needed for the adults, right? You never stop learning and growing, and we've got, we provide high-quality professional development, but we also need people that are doing that work, that understand the work, that can speak the language with the teachers, to to get into the classrooms with them and help them grow and evolve their skills. And and so, that's something that I think is important to us, and we've seen significant gains and improvements because of the coaching that we've had. Now, what I do believe is that the focus of the coaching does not need to constantly remain stagnant, and that's one of the things that Erin and Jenny and I have talked about, is that, you know, I, our literacy coaches have done a phenomenal job, but I believe there's going to be a point in time where that needs to expand beyond just literacy, and we need to move away from just these isolated focus areas for coaching when we get to that point. So, I don't see during my time here that we are ever going to say, we no longer need coaching, we've checked that box, because every year, we're getting ten to fifteen percent more new staff, and we've talked about this internally. The complexities of becoming a teacher in our district, specifically talking about teachers, with all the systems and programs we have in place is is complex. And to do that onboarding and have that coach in their corner, that's something that with the staffing changes and retirements that we have is needed. But I'd like Erin to start to kind of talk about what she's seen firsthand as to the impact of the coaches, and feel free to share your opinion on the longevity of them.
Sure. So, I will start with our math coach. I'm sure you remember when Kim Scott came and presented the impact that she has had predominantly this year on the high school, last year and this year. So, traditionally, you know, a very, I'll say traditional, again, a traditional approach to math is what we've always had at the high school level. Kim was single-handedly able to change that perception and that, the mindset, if you will, of the high school math department. So, that is not any small feat, and I think they will all admit that. Our math department now is functioning at a level that I have never seen here or across any district that I've been in. So, what I mean by that is, we have adopted what's called mathematic, if you remember that, where we experiment first and then formalize later, is kind of the the model of that. So, our kids aren't sitting in traditional classrooms where they're just doing practice problems, learning from the teacher, that type of thing. They are hands-on activities, doing the building thinking classrooms model. And now, we're starting, that took off this year, they still need support at the high school, but you'll see and you'll hear from the textbook adoption at the middle school, we are going to bring a very similar program to the middle school level. And I think, you know, we all agree that's needed as well. So, we have a DESMOs program. What Kim's role will be is to get those teachers in the same mindset of where we want to see the district move. We also have a lot of turnover in our math department next year for various reasons. I think seventh grade, the whole team is new, so that in itself is going to be a challenge. What's great about Kim, and I'm speaking solely about the math right now, but she attends all of the TBTs every week, so she's in sixth, seventh, and eighth, she's in all the high school ones, and they've come to, you know, trust her and and run things by her, and she's just kind of the, the leader of the department in a way where, like I said, she single-handedly is able to drive them forward. So, I feel very comfortable and confident in keeping a math coach. You know, if we had somebody that wasn't making a difference, I would maybe have a different feeling, but because of her personality and the way in which she's able to do these things, highly support that. I I think we'll see, like I said, changes in the middle school that we desperately need to see for our middle school kids, to get them engaged more so than the traditional textbook they have now. And that's just going to take a lot of work with Kim and working with the teachers.
If you can maybe highlight a little bit of the literacy coaches and the dyslexia law changes and science of reading and, you know, why that is important to have that support.
Okay. So, with the elementary, as Dr. Reba talked about, we'll have two literacy coaches. If you remember, we brought those back way in 2018 or 19, and initially, it was kind of just to get us onboard with teaching literacy. As Dr. Reba just mentioned, the state has implemented so many new laws and procedural-type things that it's challenging to keep up with. They're all good, but the science of reading is a new mandate that we as a district and every district in Ohio must follow. If you remember Steve Owens, when he came and did talk to us about the training he's done with the letters, and then, how do we utilize those concepts in the classroom? That's a very brief overview of elementary. We also have the secondary literacy coach, and similar to Kim, she's outstanding in her role, she's in every TBT for six, seven, eight, and all the high school. What's nice is she can see the vertical alignment, so she knows what's going on at sixth, she knows where the kids need to leave at high school, and she's able to connect those pieces and parts. Similarly, we have a new middle school ELA program next year, which is going to take a lot of work to get implemented. She's ready for that heavy lift, and I I feel confident, again, in in the people we have, that's the biggest piece, you know, we have the right people in the right places, they have the buy-in, they have the support, they have the respect from our staff, and they're making, they're making substantial changes.
When you say that Kim's had substantial impact, how are, how are we measuring that?
Well, I I mean, we could look at scores and high school scores and the value added and, you know, the, the drastic impact we had there with being in the top point-two percent of value added.
Are you saying if you got rid of the coaches, we would decline?
I'm not saying that's a direct correlation, I'm saying it's highly likely that our, you know, if we don't have somebody kind of uniting the troops and staying on them and in them and in the TBTs and, you know, kind of keeping the the spirit there like she does, we all, as humans, tend to just revert back to what we know and what we are comfortable with. And so, I think Kim's great at, you know, I'm here, what can I do for you? And just kind of staying on them in, in a positive-supporting way.
I would just add, I don't know how, this isn't exactly what Erin shared in terms of data, but just anecdotally, I just remember three years ago, sitting in our instructional summit with math teachers and Kim especially, and saying, you know, admittedly, we've got to change our math, we've got to change the student experience for math. You know, they sit there, we give a problem, they sit individually, kids are frustrated, they're not getting it, and we all do the same thing, and it's not working. And so, I just remember that, we just had a conversation about that, and here we are, I think, three years later now, and you walk past our math classrooms, and kids are up, and they're interacting, and their experiences that they're having, and they're communicating, and they're sharing exactly where they're stuck or what they've had success in, and teachers are there facilitating and able to address those needs right in the moment. I mean, it's night and day. And, you know, I I believe that all of our teachers work incredibly hard and do the best that they can, but there are still struggles when they think, you know, what I've done is working, and to kind of realize and be vulnerable and say, well, maybe I need to change a little bit, even if I've been teaching for twenty years, maybe I do need to change because we need to do our dress and engage kids differently now. And so, you know, I would encourage you to walk past them, there, it's just amazing to see the engagement of students, and again, like Erin shared, the data comes, comes with that.
This relates a little bit to one, this...
This relates a little bit to one, this, one of the data points that I look at is how, you said she's single-handedly changed the department. Is every math teacher onboard with this new way of teaching math at the high school? So to me, that's a data point. We went from everybody sitting to everybody standing. That's huge and measurable. So I, you know, I think there's room for that at the middle school now. I know you test-ran some classes, a little bit of it this year at the middle school, and had some success, so hopefully...
We had somebody doing the DESMOs, or piloting DESMOs and concept, yeah.
There was one, right. That's a data point that I find significant.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Yeah.
I'm good. It's, it's the conversation. I've had the, we, I remember talking about it. I think Kim Scott's a great teacher. There's an opportunity cost because she's no longer teaching students. So there's 30 students that were saying, or 25, what's our number? There's 30 students who were saying, "We will impact all of the students more by removing her from the classroom." The argument is that they're going to get all of the teachers, and we're going to improve the experience for everyone. But that's the argument. I just want to make sure that it's not just "we believe it," but that it's true.
And both Kim and Carol continue...
I appreciate the conversation.
Sure. Kim and Carol continue to teach one class a day, which also helps them, you know, implement what they're telling and asking the others to do. So that's also super important and helpful. Thank you.
I have one more question, Erin. I think I pieced together an answer, but help me fill it all in. We have one math coach, but three ELA. Why the discrepancy?
So back in, when we had the Striving Readers Grant in 2018, we brought in three elementary literacy coaches, and those were grant-funded. That was where we needed to put our focus, moving from kind of the traditional teaching, trying to get us to the science-of-reading-based approach. We had decided on one for the secondary level. As Dr. Reba said, we're not replacing the one elementary coach. So with the heavy lift coming in upcoming years with the K-5 ELA program, I feel it's important to keep two at the elementary. We know that Steve's heavily involved in some of the district training as well. And also, Carol's able to hit all of, you know, 612. She's busy, but she's able to hit all of that versus, you know, the five buildings at the elementary and all the teachers.
And what I've shared with Erin over the last couple of years is that I feel four instructional-focused coaches is appropriate for our district. And so within that umbrella, we've got to decide where they're going to be. And so that's why we've prioritized the literacy right now because of that whole push, but that could evolve over time.
That's, that was my guess. We could see that shifting depending on needs.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions?
So with that, I just want to clarify that I have consensus to move on with the maintain.
So do we, do we still need to think about special ed in conjunction? Or are we comfortable with that? You have, you have the, you have the charge on maintain current.
Thank you. Appreciate the work of the board to approve these ESER positions three years ago, and trust in us to implement and make some positive change, and the ability to continue to keep these key positions is critical for our kids, so thank you. Let's go to the Add Next Year tab. So again, for this one, just to frame our discussion, my job today is to share a big-picture overview of what we're looking at. If there's any discussion you want to have tonight or questions, we can by all means do that. But the goal will be to know what's on your mind, what you're thinking. If there's anything else, additional information you need, because at the May 9 meeting, we'll come back to this and see what, which aspects of this you are interested in having consensus and moving forward with, and which ones you're not. So again, same format, just a different, different positions. And then everything on this, you will see, everything has a cost because this is all new or additions. So starting with row two, this concept would provide Dave with two summer workers to help support tech. So as you talk about, you know, Chromebook, what do you call it, enrolling? Chromebook enrolling, cleaning up rooms, taking computers out, putting computers back in. We want to have everything ready for the kids and the teachers when they come back day one. This would help support. You could see in the right-hand column what that cost would be. As was mentioned earlier, as our preschool continues to grow, it's coming close to what the enrollment of one of our smaller elementary buildings would be, as well as the state, complexity of the state requirements. We believe it's time to have a dedicated preschool principal. And as Ms. Bissell already shared, that would provide targeted focus for the three coordinators that would still exist. If you have questions, please just interrupt, but I'm going to keep going. Row four, one of the things that, as you, we met with office staff and data input specialists, and I would say one of the most consistent themes we got from all of those groups or related groups was, "We need help and support with meeting the expectations for SCVIEW." So SCVIEW is our online filing system, would you say, George? And so all of our, all of our records, we've done transitions, but a lot of our records, personnel files, student files, are in SCVIEW, which is a digital filing cabinet. That means some paper copies need to be scanned, they need to be named, they need to be uploaded to the appropriate folder and link there. And from our office support staff, they are saying, "Hey, we, it is challenging to keep up, especially during the beginning of the year, when you get all these new records." And so what we are looking to try and do is take one of our current data input specialists. We would look to add 10 days to that schedule. It's not a full-year position, so we'd add 10 days. And we feel with those additional 10 days, they could do their current job as well as help support in other areas. So it's a creative way, give credit to Jenny for developing that idea, but a creative way to utilize a current employee as most efficiently as we possibly can and support a lot of others.
Do you have a certain, like, when do those 10 days take place?
So they could take place, you know, I think definitely either at the end of the year or even at the beginning of the year, you know, sometimes things get backlog-ed, and instead of waiting a whole nother year to upload things, they could be done more timely, I guess. So ideally, yeah, adding it either a little bit to the end and a little bit to the beginning would be ideal.
But just to be clear, the work would continue throughout the year.
Yeah, that's nice.
Those 10 additional days would allow some flexibility, especially at those tough points of beginning an ed, to get other work done. Moving on to row five, in speaking to the secretaries, we would be looking to add some additional days to their calendar. Our secretaries come back on August 1st, so do our principals, so do a lot of our teachers and staff. So over the summer in July, we've got orders that come in, purchases that are delivered. We've got to get class lists at the elementary school, bus lists together. So we, we're, by, by next meeting, and I'll share with you earlier, our principals have surveyed the secretaries. The price that's in here is a maximum of five additional days for every secretary. We've got some different perspectives out there as to, nobody's gone over five, but from different days, so I will review that and give you a recommendation. The one thing that I'd ask the board to consider is, we have two concepts we could do. We could either say, "Here's the additional days, everybody's going to work them, and everybody's going to work them on this same, same day." Or we could say, "Hey, you can work up to X amount of days, no more than five." They would be the week before August 1st, or the five days before August 1st, or whatever number we pick. And that would give the principal flexibility to say, "Here's what I think is needed in our building based on the current circumstance up to that maximum." So just two concepts to consider as we ponder that one. Row six is adding six additional days to the food service secretary. We have a lot of work, Steve has worked with Tammy on this. We have a lot of work that comes in over the summertime that needs her attention. So this would really be, these are employees that end in kind of mid-June, start in August. So this would give them time throughout the summer to come in, these six additional days, end of June, July, to take care of all the paperwork things, so we're ready to go to start the year. Row seven and eight, I'm recommending that we add an additional counselor to the high school level, as well as an additional counselor to the middle school level. This has been some, we reduced a counselor back in the 2019, '20 school year based on student enrollment. As we all know, the needs of our kids have significantly increased. We've worked with the high school counselors and the middle school counselors, and he spent a whole year with our counseling department last year, taking a look at the work that they're doing, what needs are. And I feel strongly that we've got the counselors in a good spot, and they need additional support to meet the best interests of our kids. And these new counselors would not just be an add to redistribute work. They would have targeted areas of focus that we're currently not getting to because of needs and staffing, that they would be able to address now. So we feel, as you saw in the maintain, we, the elementary counselors have said, "Hey, we're good. One at every building, we're good." Andy, based on his assessment and their work with him, says, "I think we're good, too." We agree that both middle school and high school need some additional support. Looking at educational aides, these are not new positions. Every elementary school has an educational aide, and educational aide provides intervention and support, help to students that need that support, as well as they provide monitoring at lunch and recess. We have different hours per the buildings. And so this is looking at consistent hours across to support the needs. The reason, I think they range from maybe five and a quarter hours to some of them are already 6.75. The reason for the expense, just to give context, is based on our OPEC contract. Once you hit a certain number of hours, you're eligible for family benefits or single or family, whatever it is. So George, I think when you did the pricing, you factored in these employees taking family benefits?
Yeah.
So that's why it's not so much the salary increase, it's the medical benefits that are causing that increase. Row 10 is an additional monitor for every elementary building. So at our buildings, we have anywhere from two monitors, I think, to four, to four monitors. The elementary principals, there was a variety of ideas out there of adding hours to monitors, adding different responsibilities to staff, or adding additional monitor. I love the idea that they came up with. They said, "Hey, if you give us one more monitor at every building, that monitor can be used to fill in for absences when they're there." So we feel that the student-staff ratio is okay. It's good, it's in the range. But this will help give additional monitoring and support. It will help to work with students that may need to develop some skills for behavior in the lunchroom or in the playground, as well as finding substitutes to come in for two hours in the middle of the day for monitors is extremely difficult, and this position would help fill in that gap so we have adequate coverage when there's absences. Erin and Nicole Hackman have been working closely, as you know. Our English learner population of students is significantly growing. And so we have one position that's an ESER position that we are, want to maintain. And based on numbers, the request here, even though it says four, the request is one new EL teacher at the, and that would help support the numbers at the elementary level, and put elementary in line with the student-to-staff ratio that we see at the middle school and high school. The, row 12 is, as we talk about coaches, we have full-time coaches, and we have stipend coaches. So we have two stipend coaches that are currently in place. Jenny oversees the teacher-based team coaches. We've had those for a number of years. And Dave oversees the tech coaches. Mr. Mickle, this kind of goes with your concept of, "How do we evolve? Do we always need coaches?" And so this is one of the things where they got together and said, "I think the focus for our coaches to be solely tech and solely TBT is something that needs to evolve and grow." So they're recommending, and I support, a move to instructional coaches. This is not a new position, but a reimagining of their work and their focus and their responsibilities. It would still be a stipend position. Because of the scope of work, we're looking to take the stipend from $1,000 to $2,000 for the year. And we are looking to reduce, what was it, 37?
39 to 25.
So 39 to 25. So the delta there is, we're adding another, we're doubling their stipend because we're expanding the scope of work. We're reducing the number, so that would be the delta between the two.
There are also, I think there were three, I believe, Dave, that were tech and TBT coaches, so they were already getting the 2,000 because they got 1,000 for each.
The next row, row 13, the reason it is green, I kept it in here because it did come up as a part of the master staffing, and I wanted to honor what was brought up. And the request was additional intervention specialists for the middle school. The reason it's highlighted green is staffing increases for teachers based on enrollment needs are something that Jenny and I and the applicable directors take a look at and then bring to the board for ultimate approval of those positions. But I've already approved the two intervention specialists because based on the number of IEPs and the supports we have to provide at the middle school, we have to do that. So that's in there. I would say, I know as you read this, I just want to put a little caveat. What I am sharing with you that is on this tab is not representative of everything they asked for. So I know it may come off as, "Okay, people asked for this, and Cameron's just putting it out there." So a lot of these positions that landed on this tab had different ideas and numbers and concepts that have been weaned down to what I think is, is in the best interest of our kids and district. So for example, you know, for a variety of these positions, there was a greater number or different concept of, "Hey, we need a person dedicated to doing scanning for SCVIEW," where we came back and said, "No, we think we could do it by adding 10 days to a one-person schedule and build it into their job." And finally, for our technology department, we have two tech assistants that work at the elementary schools. We also have other, they're called senior techs at the middle school and high school. They are 260 for us as a year-round employee. The two elementary tech assistants are 215. Again, that means half of June and all of July, they're off. We start school so early now, and teachers are back early. We need to have tech ready, so we need to have these folks working in July. So we are, we are, I am supporting the recommendation to add and make those employees 215 to 260-day or year-round employees. So that are the updates of what I'm saying would be new adds, whether in hours or days or positions for the next school year. And again, no final decisions are needed today. So Mr. Mickle, I'll turn it back over to you to see if there's any further questions that I or my team can help with.
So why don't we just start, if anybody has what I would call just factual-understanding questions about any of the positions, any of the information presented? It sounds like Laura does.
Just out of curiosity, the last one, going from 215 to 260, are the two employees okay with doing that?
Yeah.
We've actually been asking for a while, over the last couple summers, we've been bringing them in at their per-hour rate to help get some of the stuff done before teachers come. But when they first started the position, it was actually a 186 or 184 position.
Yeah.
But we were just starting with technology.
When they just started their positions, they were like 184?
189.
189, okay. 189. And that was when we had just very little technology in our elementary schools, mostly just computers and projectors. But over the years, with adding makerspace and going one-to-one, and even getting more instructional spaces in the classrooms, the time just isn't there for them, to make sure that everything's up and going for the start of the school year.
And I just want to reiterate what Dave shared, if you didn't catch it, is because of the need, we've been paying these employees by timesheet over the summer. Maybe not the full number of days, but probably 10 to 15 days a summer, I would say.
I would say at least that over the last couple of years, just because of the expansion of everything.
And I asked this question before, and I don't remember the answer. The 24908, does that include those days, or does it not?
This is just the, it's not the net number.
Okay.
So this is just the increase in the number of days.
So we would, it would be, it would actually get reduced from our actual spend because of those days. That's what I wanted to be clear on. Okay, thank you. Any other? So I think we, A, we have a lot to digest, a couple of comments just to share with the public. I don't want any... I don't want anyone to come away with the impression that we just said, hey, everybody, what do you need? And these are the, this is what they told us, and so this is what's on the, on the recommendation. As Cameron highlighted, we started this process by saying, we don't know every nuance day-to-day of what is being done. And so it seems fair and reasonable to say, hey, tell us, tell us what you would do to improve your, the work you're doing on behalf of our students. But there's a lot that we said, you know, none of it, none of it was done from an avenue of, hey, I just want to get more bodies, or more, you know, more reward for less work. But we did go through it from a judgment level and say, what has merit, what doesn't? And then this is the, this is the culmination of that work. Part of our job as a board is to evaluate the need, right? There is nothing on here that doesn't somehow affect student learning, that doesn't somehow affect the work that we intend to do in the, in the school district on behalf of our students. But there's also a budgetary consequence to that, and so some of that is just analyzing the budgetary consequence and determining the best pass, path forward. So unless there's any other specific questions, I think we're in a good place so that we can make some decisions at our next, our next meetings.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that discussion, and if anything comes up between meetings, just let me know, and I can provide that information. With that, I'm going to move on to our next section. So Mr. Breckner will be making his way to the podium to review his business service
Good evening, everyone. A couple items in the business services section for your consideration. The first one is transportation for non-public students, and it be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. School bus transportation for the students listed in the exhibit be declared impractical. The time, distance, and distance required to provide transportation, the cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment, maintenance, personnel, administration, and the additional service unavoidably disrupts current transportation schedules be further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. At the Board of Education, in lieu of providing transportation, pays parents of students attending these schools. The reimbursement will be based upon the amount allocated by the state.
Any questions for Steve?
All right, then moving on. The next item is a resolution of intent to participate in the winter use contract for the Ohio Department of Transportation. The cooperative purchasing program for sodium chloride, or otherwise known as rock salt, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the operations manager entered into an agreement between the Strongsville City Schools and the Ohio Department of Transportation for the purpose of bidding for sodium chloride. Contract to be in effect beginning September 1st, 2024, terminating April 30th, 2025. Funding to be from the general fund, supplies, materials for custodial. Any questions there?
How much rock salt did we use last year?
More in April than October. And then also, I have another item here, the lease agreement between Strongsville City Schools, District Board of Education, and Strongsville Lacrosse Association. The board hereby leases to the Strongsville Lacrosse Association, and the SLA leases from the board the properly formerly known as Albion Middle School, located at 11109 Webster Road, Strongsville, Ohio. Leases for the term and the rental amounts set forth in the exhibit and is subject to the provisions contained in the lease. The lease includes all the green space and fields and parking lots, otherwise known as the premises, and the lease agreement is attached.
And this requires a separate vote.
Do I have a motion?
Some.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Ms. Billbain. Any discussion? What are we going to do with all the revenue?
The dollar.
As always, spend it judiciously.
Can you explain the agreement for the public?
So for the price of a dollar, we are allowing Strongsville Lacrosse to use the property for their program. It will, for all intents and purposes, be their home until such a time where we deem that we need to use it for other educational functions than just having it be the field. We will be maintaining the grass on that for them. They will in turn then have their games and paint. They'll be installing a storage shed of types. It's more of a storage container, really, what they've proposed to me. But that will be their home, that's where they're located, and we've had a good run with them being good stewards of the property. And if there's any improvements, changes that need to be made to the property, the lease builds in a mechanism that will be informed beforehand. So they will really just be good stewards of the property, and we will be taking care of it, and it will be maintained in good condition with this partnership.
Thank you, Steve. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Billbain?
Yes.
Mr. Mickle?
Yes.
Ms. Housen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the last item is a gift given to the district, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The following gift be approved. Amy Fox donated miscellaneous office supplies to the Strongsville City School District.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we'll have Erin Green, Director of Curriculum, share her lengthy curriculum report for tonight.
Yes, so I have 12 items tonight for your consideration. As you heard earlier, we do have some textbook adoptions on the agenda. So I will go through these, and then I'm glad to answer questions you have on the process or any of the textbooks as well. So item one is grade K through 5 music adoption. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that a five-year digital license be adopted for our K through 5 music as presented in the exhibit. The five-year total cost will be $40,950 as presented in the pricing exhibit. The curriculum has been recommended by our professional staff, and parents were given the opportunity to review and provide feedback. The second item is for our grades K through 5 English Language Arts adoption, and this is what George had referenced earlier when he was talking through the budgets. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that a six-year textbook and digital license be adopted for our K5 ELA as presented in the exhibit. The six-year total cost will be $1,059,073.52 as presented in the pricing exhibit. This curriculum has been selected and reviewed by the curriculum personnel from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce's mandated list of core curriculum in grades K through Item three is grades 6 through 8 English Language Arts adoption. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that a six-year digital and textbook license be adopted for our 6th through 8th English Language Arts as presented in the exhibit. This six-year total cost will be $262,793.46 as presented in the pricing exhibit. The curriculum has been recommended by our professional staff. Parents were given the opportunity to review and provide feedback. Item four is our grades 6 through 8 math adoption. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that a six-year digital and textbook license be adopted for 6th through 8th grade math as presented in the exhibit. The six-year total cost will be $254,503.94 as presented in the exhibit. The curriculum has been recommended by professional staff, reviewed by members of the community. And again, parents were given opportunities to provide the feedback as well. Item five is our grades 7 and 8 Social Studies adoption. Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent that a six-year digital and textbook license be adopted for our grades 7 and 8 Social Studies as presented in the exhibit. This six-year total cost will be $263,214.93 as presented in the pricing exhibit. The curriculum has been recommended by professional staff. Parents were given the opportunity to review and provide feedback. Item six is our Studies Weekly ELA supplement. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that Strongsville City School District pays to purchase Studies Weekly Social Studies for grades K through 5, and Science Studies Weekly for grades K to 2, at a total cost of $39,256.19. Item seven is Touch Math, and this is through the SEF grant that was approved last month. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that Strongsville City School District pays to purchase Touch Math to be used in grades K through 8, at a cost of $27,681.60. Item eight is Edmentum. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that Strongsville City School District pays to purchase Edmentum courseware to be utilized in the credit recovery and Strongsville Academy programs for three years, beginning July 21st, 2023. The total cost was $95,325, of which $31,775 will be payable each year. This is for the second installment that will begin July 21st, 2024. Item nine, a student-teacher.
Erin, before moving on, can we talk about all of the books?
Absolutely.
Can you give us a summary?
Yeah.
In five words or less?
Oh. Well.
Can you give us a summary? It's a lot.
It is a lot.
Oh, my.
It's a lot, and some of it was anticipated, some of it was unanticipated. Can you give us the run-through?
Sure. Okay, so we'll start with the unanticipated one. The Department of Education and Workforce has come out with a list, Science of Reading Aligned Textbook Series. So we knew this was something that we wanted to invest in, but they put us, you know, by law, we need to have this in place by the end of next year. So that really crunched our timeline that we had. We're going to actually pilot components of it next year with certain teachers that are part of our ELA committee, and then fully implement the year after that. And what that will do is allow us time to develop professionally, so we're not rushing the process, because this was somewhat unanticipated on our end. So that's the K through 5 ELA. There is the reimbursement part that George talked about of, you know, 200 and some thousand dollars from the state. And that was to try to offset the costs to districts. However, as you can see, it fell very short of what it's actually costing us. The other items were mostly for the middle school level. When I started here 11 years ago, we didn't really have a textbook adoption cycle. So we had books that were 10, 15, 20 years old even. We started a textbook adoption cycle. Most of them were, at that point, seven or eight years in length. They've all kind of come together now this year, and companies do more of a six-year. So that's why we have the math, the ELA, and the social studies at the middle school. It's actually going to work out really nicely because we can focus on the middle school together in all of those content areas, and kind of do an overhaul, if you will, of the curriculum. Is that short enough?
You have all the time in the world. As far as, so we've talked about how some of this, well, forced is the wrong word, required might be a better word. Some of this we're required, we are being required to do. Much of this, we don't have a whole lot of choices in what we choose. What is your professional opinion, regardless of the choices, are we making good choices?
Absolutely. So we have spent an entire year going through our choices, because again, we want to make sure that we're being responsible with taxpayer money. All of these adoptions were up this year, meaning we had to do something, because we didn't have any more online licenses, or the consumables were at their last year. So we either had to renew what we currently had, and we did look at that option, but most of them were outdated, or look at a different option. And so, you know, through a very thorough process, give some credit to Nicole Hackman, she worked this process for an entire year with the teachers. You kind of go through the big names and the textbook companies. You look at those that are on the Ohio approved list of what you're allowed to purchase, just in general in the state of Ohio. Narrow those down, use teachers to go through them, evaluate them, have the publishers come in. We also then open it up to the community at large, and allow them to either look at it online or look at it in person, fill out a survey, rubric, ask any questions they have. And then kind of the overall final decision, aside from the board, is made from me, and, you know, just to ensure that I feel that it's going to meet the needs of our students and our teachers. And I do feel very confident in the ones we've selected.
We have no, no math. And it wasn't no math. What was the one that always had the trouble?
Go math? No.
Everyday math?
No math? I like the no math.
Go math.
I said go math.
Oh, didn't you?
Or no math.
And the reason I bring that up is, is it's always easy to Monday morning quarterback, but we've done, we've done textbook adoptions before that people, that people in the community, people, people in our own schools have been very critical of. So I think it's important that we publicly state, these materials we think not only are adequate, they're above adequate. They're, they're the materials we would pick.
Absolutely.
And they will give our teachers the ability to pass on the knowledge they need to pass on as well as they can. There, you know, again, it wasn't that long ago when we were complaining that we're, you know, our history books are so old, they're original documents. And now we're, now we, now we're, we have the opposite problem with the digital licensing, et cetera. It doesn't matter how old they are, you know, we're not buying them, per se, we're licensing, licensing them for a period of time. And so now we get the opposite effect of we're doing what we should be doing, which is, you know, a cycle six, seven, eight years. And I don't know if anybody else has sticker shock, but I have sticker shock.
I did, too.
And the, and it should be noted, you know, just like going to the grocery store, inflation has a pernicious effect. Inflation has had a pernicious effect on our textbooks. My, my go math said 33%.
Right. And what's a little bit different now is, you alluded to it, everything is online. So the publishers charge a large amount of money because it's constantly updated. So that's the expense, but then we also have consumables each year. So, you know, instead of charging those to the students like we have in the past, we pay this upfront cost for six years of online licenses, in addition to six years of consumables that will be sent each year. That covers the shipping for the next six years, so it is a large amount, but I think it's only going to get higher each year.
Inflation has that way. Any other questions for Erin?
Mr. Mickle, the one, the other thing I'll add to that, that I forgot to mention during my financial update. Annually, we budget $400,000 for curriculum, for textbooks. This year, we budgeted $600,000, which was due to, last year, we didn't spend, we didn't do a textbook adoption. So we had that savings, we carried over $600,000. So part of the cost, well, not part of the cost, but last year we had a savings with not adopting it this year, kind of making it up on top of the unexpected adoption.
I'm good.
Okay. Want to carry on with the last three items?
Please.
All right. Item nine is a student-teacher placement. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following student-teacher will be placed. This is a student-teacher that will be at Whitney Elementary School, September 2nd through December 6th, 2024, from Franklin University. Item 10 is internship placements, and this is through a partnership that we have with Baldwin Wallace. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following students shall be placed for the purpose of student-teaching internships. And you can see, there's a lengthy list of 10 student-teachers, as well as 10 of our English Language Arts and Social Studies staff members that will be taking these teachers on. The date for that is September 3rd through December 6th, 2024. Item 11 is our summer school dates for this upcoming summer. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that elementary and secondary summer school for the year 2023 and 2024 be approved as following. The elementary summer school that will be at Maraski Elementary will be held June 3rd through the 18th, and those are Monday through Thursdays. And then the secondary summer school, which will take place at Strongsville High School, will be June 3rd through June 27th, 2024. Those are again Monday through Thursdays with no June 19th. Those are again Monday through Thursdays with no June nineteenth. The last item I have tonight is an overnight trip for the Strongsville High School Varsity, Junior Varsity, and Freshman Cheerleaders. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the permission be granted to the Strongsville High School Varsity, J V and freshman cheerleaders to travel to Alliance, Ohio, July ninth through eleventh, twenty twenty-four, to participate in cheer camp at the University of Mount Union. Transportation will be via school bus, lodging and meals will be paid by participating students.
Any additional questions for Erin? Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Student Service Report. We'll bring up Andy again to give his report for the month.
Hello again. I have four, four items for your consideration this evening. The first is A S G Education Services. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with S, A S G Education Services Incorporated, the LEAP program for placement of students with disabilities for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The second item is Power School Group. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Power School Group, L L C, to provide special programs, Special Education Case Management, five oh four, and Digital Signature for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents. Third item is also Power School Group. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Power School Group, L L C, to provide Unified Insights for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the amount of forty-eight thousand, twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents. The fourth item is Healthcare Process Consulting. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into a three-year agreement with Healthcare Processing, Process Consulting, otherwise known as H P C, for the purpose of assisting in managing the district's Ohio Medicaid School Program to procure federal Medicaid reimbursement for district-provided Medicaid-eligible services. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Next, we'll turn it over to Jenny Pelco, our Assistant Superintendent for the Human Resource Report.
Thank you. I have the following items for your consideration under Human Resources. We have the resignation for a certificated district substitute, resignation for non-certificated staff, we have the retirement of a non-certificated staff member, appointments for certificated staff, appointments for non-certificated staff, appointments for home instruction tutors, appointments for non-certificated substitutes, appointments for certificated athletics supplemental contracts. We have changes in hours for non-certificated staff, change in status for non-certificated staff. One change in status for a non-certificated staff, it's a reduction of days, reduction in force, contract recommendations for non-certificated staff. We have a stipend for our summer professional development, stipend for summer professional development, this is through our Title II A Improving Teacher Quality Fund, medical leaves for certificated staff, medical leaves for non-certificated staff, unpaid leaves for non-certificated staff, and finally, volunteers. And that concludes my report.
Questions for Jenny? All right, finally, I'm going to ask our Director of Technology, Dave Binkley, to come up with his report. Dave?
Hello again. I think this might be my record in like five years, being like three meetings in a row where I have to talk. I have a couple items for, for actions tonight, and then one discussion item. Item number one is for Meta Solutions Master Service Agreement for Schedule One and Schedule Two for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year of the zero zero one General Fund. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that Schedule One of the Agreement between Meta Solutions and Strongsville City Schools be approved to provide information technology services for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty twenty-five at an annual cost of one hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. That's approximately twenty dollars and twenty-five cents per student for our current count of five thousand, six hundred eighty-five students. There is a two percent discount for early payment, reducing the cost to one hundred and twelve thousand dollars, eight hundred, or sorry, one hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-three cents. And then be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Schedule Two of the Approved Agreement between Meta Solutions and the Strongsville City Schools be approved to provide Info Ohio Library Services for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year at the cost of sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents. That's two dollars and ninety cents per student with the same student count of five thousand, six hundred and eighty-five students. Item number two is with-
Before we go further, what do we get for, from Info Ohio?
Info Ohio is used in all of our media centers. It helps them use certain programs like Book, Book Flix and other programs that they use. It also helps us with our inventory systems of, of the books within our, in our libraries for the checking out services, like workflows and things like that.
Thank you.
Item two is with Northern Buckeye Education Council and Northwest Ohio Computer Association with their Member Service Agreement out of the zero zero one General Fund. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Member Service Agreement between Northern Buckeye Education Council and the Northwest Ohio Computer Association and Strongsville City Schools be approved to provide E-rate eligible Category One bundled least-lit fiber with direct internet access bandwidth at five G. Northern Buckeye Education Council will provide basic firewall services as a standard component of this internet access service. This is a five-year contract encompassing the dates of July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. The annual cost is sixty thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Any questions about this item? No? My third item is with Southeast Security Upgrades, who are Ruckus Networks, using zero-one-nine other grants and E-rate reimbursement funds and zero-zero-one General Fund. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Agreement between Southeast Security and Strongsville City Schools be approved to provide upgrades to the district Ruckus Network. This includes commissioning tasks, programming and training, and E-rate K-12 watchdog support renewal services. This one is pertaining to middle school. We're going to update all the access points in the middle school. Last year, we were able to put all of our buildings on the same infrastructure of Ruckus. This year, we are now going to have every building be Wi-Fi six compatible with this. And those are my three items for consent.
Any questions for Dave?
We do have one follow-up discussion item on Huddle, so Dave is going to share some highlights. The board has reviewed that, so they know the details, but just for the community, give the high-level overview of what the changes are from your last recommendation, and then the board can discuss.
All right, for the new recommendation shown here in blue from our previous one, would be that we would go to four cameras next year, two indoor and two outdoor. The new cameras would be one indoor at the main gym portion of the middle school, and then one outdoor camera at Serpentine Field there. So this would provide us initial coverage of possibly up to fourteen teams, based on what's there. The green sports are the high school sports, and the yellow sports are the middle school sports. This contract would be for approximately twenty-six thousand dollars, which is six thousand dollars more than the basic renewal, and that accounts for the three thousand dollars for each camera that we would be adding at the middle school. With the additional cost of workers and the required tech, the total amount of confidence, or total amount of financial commitment for next year would be forty-four thousand dollar, forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. And then if you scroll, do you want me to continue?
Yeah, you went through that last time, so the board knows the breakdown and the advertisement, so why don't you talk about the potential utilization of the revenue?
So potential utilization would be that this would be between the athletic department and the boosters. So the idea is that the money that would come in would first go to, or the money that would be brought in from revenue would be go towards the reserve for the payment for the next year contract. Once that money has been earned through either the ad revenue or the tickets themselves, then the next thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars would go towards reserve payment for the next year's game workers. And then that, if we received any revenue beyond that, the next goal would be to save about ten thousand dollars. That would allow us to expand to possibly four more cameras for the two Flex and the two Diamond cameras. The Flex cameras were for the soccer fields and the Diamond, yeah, there it is. The Diamond cameras are for the baseball and softball fields. Anything beyond those, that fund, so the twenty-six thousand, thirteen thousand, five hundred, and the ten thousand dollars, anything beyond that would then become a fifty-fifty split between the athletic department and the athletic boosters. And then that split, if any excesses there, has been earmarked for specific projects already, so that way, these would be things that are not covered through their general budget, or things that, you know, that we've previously gotten some help with, with the boosters from. Those could be, Denny and Jason talked about a fan app to help engage students, parents and staff and community members with what events are going on and then keeping them updated on scores. There's been conversations about possibly getting a new scores table and chairs for, for the gymnasiums at the high school and middle school. A new accordion batting cage for use of the balcony at the middle, the middle gym at the high school. By doing this, providing another batting cage, it could free up some space in, in the main gyms for some of our spring activities as well. Some more new storage and wraps around the stadium, around the, the home stands particularly for, for storage. Some upgrades to the press box, or possibly some renovation there, along with the visitors, sorry, the visitors' press box. It is not the greatest condition, and a lot of our opposing coaches actually come to the home side and then squish in next to our, our announcers, just because of the vantage point and things like that, that helps benefit them. You know, so maybe including a sound system for the back gym that we currently don't have, because we are starting to host some events back there with some of our J V and our freshman teams, so having an adequate sound system back there would be helpful. You know, some new storage systems for uniforms, team equipment, and possibly providing some, some giveaway of promotional materials. And then possibly, you know, maybe considering turfing the softball and baseball fields with some of that. And then on the next page, some things that we've discussed about with the athletic boosters. It would help supplement their original donation. Every year, they do give a donation at about ten thousand dollars to have our students attend athletic events for free. We thought any of these additional revenues could go towards that and help them actually expand possibly the events that our students go to. Help renovate, help continue the renovation of the current locker rooms that they're already doing to help the, the cause. Other things here, you know, would put some ice machines outside the locker rooms that would be very helpful for game days and practices. And just other items that would help out the locker rooms, both at the stadium and inside the high school. Some renovations and improvements to our weight room and additional training supplies, things like a vertamax system, or updated bikes and Stairmasters in the training room. And the last one here that, that was discussed was help creating a digital display for our Athletic Hall of Fame. There's a lot of schools are going that way, and they have investigated that this year, and I have done it with them, but right now, that is just not in their purview of expenses, but with additional revenue, that would be something that would be of interest to all parties.
So what we're looking for, obviously, we started this, this discussion last meeting, was asked to bring it back for further discussion. Based on the feedback, Dave and his team have modified the recommendation. So what we're asking for the board today is to see if there's consensus on going with Option B, which is the four cameras, and that's really what would be on a future agenda, is that Option B with four cameras, we're recommending a one-year contract with the paywall, see how it goes for a year, proof of concept, are we, how are ticket sales, how are advertising? That's all possible, correct, Dave? A one-year contract? And so, Mr. McCall, I'll turn it back over to you for discussion to give us guidance on what you want to see, if anything, on the May ninth agenda. But again, we're recommending Option B with a one-year contract.
Anybody want to start with any specific factual questions?
I'm just confused, maybe I'm not reading this right. So Option B, I thought, the last option, didn't that include baseball and softball? But we're not including that now. Am I reading it wrong?
So, I'm sorry, could you rephrase that question?
Originally, I thought it was Option B plus.
Correct.
Is that still, because that's soccer, baseball, and softball, and then all of these other ones? Am I right, or am I?
Correct. So with the last one, there was three levels of recommendation with the paywall, and the paywall was Option B.
Right.
To, after coming back with the feedback and recommendations, I tried to simplify it in this format. So Option A was just continuing as is. Option B was our new recommendation, and Option C showed like the maximum, maximum possibility or maximum contract we could have with Huddle.
So, so Ms. Kilbin, you are correct. What is being recommended does not include baseball or softball. It would just be for our outdoor football fields, soccer field, you know, the, the stadiums at the middle school and high school and the main gyms.
So no?
No soccer, no baseball, unless they're playing at Pacatán Stadium, or unless they're playing at Serpentine Field.
But that's this year. That doesn't mean we can't revisit it-
Correct.
A year from now.
Correct.
Yeah, because I would like to include them all.
We're not making, we're not making a permanent decision, we're making a one-year decision.
No, I understand that. I would still just like to include them all. I, I just don't, you know, we're always about being equitable, and, you know, the baseball, softball, soccer, I don't know. I just feel like, why are we not including them? Is it because of money? I mean, I know it's more.
So from my perspective, you know, what resonates for me is that this is a revenue-generating opportunity. And we've talked about the athletic department growing the opportunities and the ability to generate revenue. There's a risk with that, and the risk is, is that our estimates are wrong and it doesn't generate revenue. At that point, for me, the way I would look at it is, is we are subsidizing the ability for non-residents to watch sports. And I, I would not want to be in a position of subsidizing non-residents watching sports. So at the end of the day, I like, I'm, I'm comfortable that it would generate revenue. I'm comfortable that Dave and Jason and Denny have worked through this, and I'm comfortable saying, let's do this for one year, let's not do the whole shooting match, and let's learn from it for one year, and then I'm hoping that Dave, Denny, and Jason come back and say, we were wrong, it didn't generate ninety thousand dollars, it generated half a million dollars. And then all bets are off. But I, I think that it's reasonable to go slow and learn, because there's a lot of new technology, there's a lot of new scheduling, there's a lot of new, you know, we have the technology, now we have the burden of using it and making sure we've scheduled either volunteers or employees and all of that. So I, I kind of like the, I like the middle ground approach and saying, let's get started with that, and if it's widely successful, let's cross-pollinate as far as we can and as wide as we can.
And to add to that, this new Option B, the new recommendation, really goes along with our current infrastructure. We can easily add a camera into the middle school gym, and with a little bit of work, we can easily add the, the Serpentine Field at the middle school without any-
without any heavy lifts. To do something at the, at Foltz Fields, those cameras rely on external hotspots and other technology that we may not, we're not as confident in, I would say, at the beginning. So to do this would ensure that we would have the proof of concept and that we would have the ability to make sure that we maximize what we have. Going with the flex and the diamond cameras could provide other obstacles that may not be as directly manageable by us in this trial period.
Well, you're the expert.
I'm sorry?
I said, you're the expert. So if, yeah, if it would be overwhelming or you don't think you'd, yeah.
I have a question. Are any of the cameras, the responsibility of whoever's there to take them down and bring them back to like the board office or a meeting place? Are they all permanent where they're at for the meantime?
So with the, the recommendation here, these are all permanent cameras. Like if you go to the high school gym, you look above the, like the student section, parent section, you can see it hanging from the ceiling. If you go to Pacatán's, you'll see it hanging out in front of the press box. It'll be the same thing at the middle school. Actually, the middle school gym, it'll be the same thing. It'll be attached to a wall there. And then we would have to probably create some type of a structure to secure it at the middle school. But the, as of right now, from the literature, the flex cameras are completely portable. So it would be someone's responsibility to set it up and tear it down. I don't have much of the literature on the diamond, the baseball and softball one yet because they're still developing that. I don't know if that's a portable one or if that's a stationary one.
I was just thinking going to Sharon's comment about having them in certain places. If we could use the flex cameras then there, if there's ones that can?
The flex cameras are only made for soccer. They're only soccer AI programs with them. So it would only be for basically our use of Foltz Field.
They only record soccer?
I'm sorry?
They only record soccer?
The way that the programs, the AI programming is with that, that specific camera, it is only designed for soccer. That's why they have, the flex cameras is for soccer, the diamond cameras are for baseball and softball. But the indoor and outdoor cameras are able to use different sports.
They crossed all their Ts and dotted all their Os, putting every dollar out of everything for every camera, the money they put into making the AI for that.
How often would we have two soccer games going on at Foltz Field concurrently?
Right now, or from our previous meeting and talking to Denny and Jason, and they will let me know if I'm wrong, but right now when they're doing is sometimes they have like a JV game going on one of the fields and a varsity field going, varsity game going on the other and then they swap. So you do have two events going on at, at the same time.
And Sharon, when I first looked at it too, I was like, how, how can we get all the sports? But I like the idea that we're like piloting, like, because we asked if there were other districts around the area that were doing the same thing and it doesn't sound like, it sounds like we're going to be one of the first districts to, to do this.
In northeast Ohio, there were a couple of districts that were using this at a smaller scale. I know we got some information from Chagrin Falls, but they're using it just for ticket revenue or for ticket selling and they weren't doing really advertisements with it. And there's some other schools that are kind of doing the same thing. But we would probably be considered one of the frontrunners or pilot in northeast Ohio with this kind of approach to it.
Yep. So when we're successful, then we can bring in more sports.
I mean, I would think the goal is to cover all of our sports, but.
Unfortunately, there's like only two that are lucked out. That's my only point.
Right.
Unfortunately, but I understand.
Sharon will be there with her iPhone for streaming on Facebook.
I'll put it on.
Instead of AI, it'll be Sharon I.
Oh, there you go.
And Scott does a great job of covering at least one to two home events of every sport throughout the year.
Right.
So it's not like every sport is completely forgotten about. He does everything, even including hockey and swimming. Him and, and our camera crew make sure that we get at least one to two events of every sporting event throughout the school year.
And you just highlighted some other sports that they're going to have to come up with some AI.
I know, I was just going to say, I forgot about hockey and swimming.
They'll have to come up with an AI camera.
Oh my gosh, we're going to really have to have a lot of cameras.
If everyone's comfortable, I think we can, let's go with option, bring back option B for a vote. And that, the proviso there is that's for the dollars and cents and how we're going to pay for it. I like the work that was done to craft ideas, but they're just ideas. I challenge the tech department and the athletic department to do what's going to generate revenue, right? Whether it's adjusting pricing, whether it's adjusting, you know, what, what we're going to do and the packages we're going to have. We shared some ideas. I don't, I don't need to micromanage it. Come back and wow us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave, and that concludes my report.
Next on. Next on our agenda is report on Polaris Career Center. Mrs. Bissell.
Yes, it's, it's that time of year where we're getting ready for all these fun end-of-the-year recognitions and activities. So I just want to highlight a couple of things that have happened lately. Students from the project Lead the Way at Strongsville High School, along with Briar Mid Park and Olmsted Falls, traveled to the University of Akron to attend the Senior Engineering Design Expo. So this was a great little field trip for them to learn and take part of that. We also had, and unfortunately I don't have their names, but we had our Strongsville High School biomedical and engineering students, six of them, inducted into the National Technical Honor Society at Polaris. So congratulations to those six students. I'm going to give a shout out here to two of our Strongsville High School Polaris ambassadors. First one is Jordan Lynch. She is in the pre-nursing program. And I love this, it says, what's the best thing about Polaris? It's the community here. It is future-driven. And I feel like that summarizes what Polaris is for many of our students. And then I've got one more that was just highlighted the other day. Samantha Van Hove is a business professional and office technology student. And she says she loves working with her instructor and her peers. They've created a big support group that feels like family. So our students are succeeding and doing very well at Polaris. Couple of ways that you can get involved coming up if you're interested. For those of you who have middle school students, students entering sixth, seventh or eighth grade, there's something called Camp Discovery. It takes place the week of June 10th through 13th, Monday through Thursday, nine AM to two thirty PM. And if you have looked at the cost of summer camps for your students, you know that they're rather high. This one is that whole week of camp, a hundred and fifty dollars a student. So if you're looking for something, you get a great Polaris experience for a very reasonable cost and they have all kinds of amazing classes. Cardboard creations, culinary creations, digital illustration, game of drones, jewelry design, junior veterinarian and so on. I know they're filling up fast. I just got a notice today that five are already full. So if you're interested in that, get on that right away. And one more thing for those of you who are just in our community, we are hosting the first ever Family Career Night and Job Fair at the Cuyahoga County Fairgrounds. This is a huge event. It's taken the entire year to plan. So this is open to the public. So come on out, check out what's going on. And there is an opportunity, both our fifth and sixth grade students will be traveling to this over the two days, that this will be at the fairgrounds and they have curriculum and all kinds of things that go with it that starts to get them to think about their future or their career. So lots of exciting things coming up. Check out the website for more details. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Michelle. Report on legislation is me. On April 10th, the governor had his State of Ohio report. One of the things he highlighted was cell phones and social media. And he called on the legislature to pass new laws regarding cell phones, along with asking the legislature to address legal concerns surrounding a previously passed law that requires parental consent for children to have social media accounts prior to the age of sixteen years old. On one front, the legislature did respond and yesterday, the Ohio Senate added an amendment to a existing bill limiting the use of cell phones in public school classrooms. The way the law is proposed to work is it will require school boards to pass a policy regarding cellphone use. And I'm happy to report that Strongsville already has policy 5136. And I highlight that in order to avoid disruption of the educational environment and protect students' rights of privacy, student use of PCDs, which is personal communication devices, on school grounds during school hours, excluding use as approved, is prohibited, excluding use as approved by a classroom teacher or principal. You know, Cameron remembers, we, we did a lot of work on cell phones and tablets and computers and all of that stuff. And the philosophy has always been the, the two burdens. One, to make sure they're not a distraction during the school day, but at the same time, we're not doing our students any service by not teaching them how to use these tools properly. But I was going to suggest that the policy committee, if and when it meets, probably should review our PCD policy because it hasn't been reviewed since 2013. If nothing else, you can add the new models of cell phones. That concludes my report on legislation. Moving on to liaison reports, city council.
I can take it, Laura, or you can take it.
I could start and if you want to add on to it, that would be great.
Perfect.
I just wanted to highlight that residents can bring their household hazardous waste to the service center next Tuesday and Wednesday, April 30th and May 1st for safe disposal between the hours of seven thirty AM and two thirty PM each day. And there's a list on their Facebook page of everything that will be accepted. And I know that this was happening tonight, but I think if people had questions that they could reach out and get more information. The Cuyahoga County Fiscal Office hosted a presentation from six to eight tonight at the rec center about the 2024 state ordered reappraisals and how they could affect your property taxes. I know this is always very confusing when these come out. So I'm sure people had more questions that they could reach out and get answers to questions.
And then I know we had a, a council meeting last week on Monday, mostly routine business, but the one thing I was going to highlight was that they did approve some updates to zoning ordinances specifically for allowing improvements at the mall, which obviously is something that is concerning to everyone, malls in general, but specifically our own South Park Mall. That concludes city council. Who would like to do Strongsville Education Foundation?
That would be me. The last meeting was April 11th. Dr. Reiba talked on the levy. If it doesn't pass again in November, that will be our last try for, for this levy. They went on to talk about scholarships. We've had twenty-four total applicants that they are reviewing right now. And I thought this was a really nice thing. They have a new scholarship in memory of Brian Tomino, an English teacher who was here for, Johnny would know better, you guys, but a long, long time. And so people are still, they're still raising money for whatever, but it will be in his name through the Strongsville Foundation. So if anybody wants to look that up or donate to it, you can look on their website. I'm sure that they have details. And the senior salute is May 6th. They always give out their scholarships. And I thought this was funny. People haven't claimed their scholarships from last year. So if you have a child that got a scholarship through the foundation, please have them because May 31st is it. You can't get it after that. So if anybody got a scholarship, you know, it would be great to collect that money. And they are already preparing for their casino night, which is November 23rd. And it sounds like it's going to be a great time. So look on their, again, look on their website and there's chances for sponsorships and things like that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Sharon. Strongsville PTA Council.
And that's me. I really don't have a whole lot on them. The PTA, their installation was moved from May 9th, and if I'm not right about this, somebody correct me, to May 12th. Or no, I'm sorry. It is May 9th at 11:30 at Jay Bella. I didn't read my own handwriting. And I think that's it. They had Katie Hauck come, the principal at Whitney. She spoke during it. Cameron gave his report. Oh, and I heard a lot of good feedback. I wasn't there, I was at another meeting, but the Strongsville High School Leadership Group came and spoke and I think they impressed a lot of the PTA members and, and different people. So I heard a lot of good feedback from that. So that concludes my report.
And what day is the installation? May 9th?
It is May 9th.
Through the 12th? That's going to be quite an installation.
Stay there all week.
May 9th it is. Board committee reports, finance committee?
We have not met and that will be announced.
I was going to jump in after that.
Go ahead.
So our next board meeting, which is March 9th, Thursday. What did I say? Our next. Our next board meeting. Our next board meeting is May 9th, Thursday, 7:00 PM, in this building, in this room. It is a work session. The primary topic will be the five-year forecast. George will review it. There's going to be obviously a lot. The five-year forecast, I've had various people in the last month tell me whether the five-year forecast is good or bad or useful or not useful. At the end of the day, it is the imperfect tool that we as a board and that we as a school district use to plan our financial future. And so whether, whether you think it's good, bad or indifferent, we've extended that invitation to a number of community groups. Repeating again, it is May 9th at 7:00 PM. We invited the finance committee of the Strongsville GOP to attend. We're going to make it a committee of the whole and we're going to, I'd like George to extend an invitation to the finance committee that they consider that May 9th meeting a meeting of the finance committee and everyone that is available should attend. I cannot stress enough, you know, we don't need to go back to current events or so on, but obviously we had a levy that failed. Obviously, we're, this five, this five-year forecast will be instrumental in helping the board decide what our next steps are. So I cannot stress enough how important that is. And I extend that invitation to everyone who's interested in the community, taxpayers, Bonnie, the Strongsville GOP, our finance committee. It will be a, it will be important work that we do. And again, good, bad or indifferent, the five-year forecast is the tool that we have available to us. So we are going to do our best to dive into it, poke holes into it, validate it, and then we'll be able to, as a board, use that to make next decisions. What day is it again, Sharon? May 9th.
Are you going to be here?
No.
You'll watch it on TV. It'll make for riveting TV.
I'll be in Italy.
Okay, I think that's enough for the finance committee. Do we have a policy committee update?
It appears that we're going to have one soon, per Richard's request.
Facilities committee?
Our next meeting is August 13th, 2024, 6:30 PM, right here in this building.
And we did have a meeting.
On, at the, the statement is the Polaris meeting.
On, about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and there was a, quite a bit of discussion led by Steve Brechner on critical needs and making sure that we are scheduling our summer periods to be able to use those effectively to do some of our repairs and maintenance and all of those kinds of things. March of April, April 9th. I, I see a trend here on the 9th. March of April, April 9th. I, I see a trend here on the 9th. Business Advisory Council. Do we have a report?
Our last meeting was canceled, so we'll see you in the fall.
Excellent. Have a great summer. It's not too early. Next is adoption of the consent calendar. Adoption by the Board of Education. Action by Board of Education in adoption of consent calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as type action consent, which constitutes the consent calendar, are adopted in one single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise?
Yes, I'd like to request that you remove J 18, because if you can't vote on your wife being a volunteer, then I cannot vote on myself.
To maintain the, the absolute impartiality, we will remove item J, what was it again?
18.
18, uh, and vote on that separately. So first, do I have a motion for the? Okay. So first, a motion for adoption of the consent calendar?
Sumoed.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, are you?
Yeah, I'm good.
Do I need to refresh?
Uh, yeah, probably.
And then we have a motion on volunteers be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that following volunteers be approved to chaperone. Do I have a motion?
Sumoed.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Michelle, do you wanna explain why you're not voting?
I already did.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissell?
Epstein.
Next on our agenda is superintendent timely information.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. A couple of updates as we go around the district to highlight some of the great staff and the work that they're doing. Uh, first of all, we'll go to Whitney Elementary School. Mrs. Patton-Holz, who's, uh, our music teacher over there. She had a great idea to connect staff and students, um, during Music in the Schools Month. So during the morning announcement, she gave clues about, uh, musical interests of the staff, whether it's instruments or connections. Uh, and students had to solve those riddles. So some of them were, who sang the national anthem at Wrigley Field? I didn't know that either, but Mrs. Hawk did, uh, the principal. Uh, Mrs. Kerr spent nine years tap dancing and with tap dancing and ballet. Uh, Mr. La- loves karaoke. I could see that. Um, and Mr. Shively is currently, uh, learning how to play guitar. So the classes worked together to figure out who those mystery musicians were uh, and brought a great, uh, experience, um, and excitement around the Whitney building to celebrate music in the schools and learn some cool facts about, uh, the staff. Uh, going up to the middle school, Mrs. Zabo in, uh, teaches, uh, seventh grade honors ELA. Uh, and in one of those classes, she, you know, started with that essential question, which is, or which was for her. What is the biggest obstacle preventing human beings from space exploration? So the kids took that essential question, worked in small groups to analyze and solve different possible solutions. Uh, they use their problem solving skills to overcome those obstacles. And then they were tasked with developing, uh, some prototype projects with their creative solutions. So again, uh, giving students voice and choice that align with our standards, that allow them to use those model Mustang skills, uh, that we, uh, work to support and, uh, bring to life our content. Uh, this is a great example of some, uh, work of teachers leaning into deeper learning work, uh, that's highlighted here. So thanks to Mrs. Zabo for the work in developing that great experience, uh, for our students. And then finally, at the high school, uh, if you had an opportunity to catch our 60 seconds from last week, we highlighted Mrs. Rose, uh, and her new course, uh, this year, Music and Literature. Uh, so it's not just about, uh, talking about your favorite songs or music, but it's about connection, uh, to literature. So they've created presentations on their favorite genre of music, playlists around a theme. Um, studied different song lyrics through the lens of literature, as well as analyzed music themed short stories. Uh, and it's been extremely pos- popular course with our students. Um, and using that passion and that interest into music, uh, to also develop their literacy, uh, and writing skills. So again, at the high school every year, our teachers have the ability to propose new courses. Some of them make it, some of them don't. Uh, and if it makes the, the, uh, course study, uh, then it depends on students signing up for it. And so it's great to see that idea come to life and then kids take part in it. And finally, on the last slide, uh, this time of year means it's all the wrap-up spring concerts for, uh, choir and music, uh, or choir and orchestra and band, as well as some of our final, uh, theater performances of the year. So the dates are there starting, um, next week and going through the first, uh, couple of weeks of May, uh, as well as the Dare, the annual Dare dances that kinda cap off the year for our fifth and sixth graders, as well as our seventh and eighth graders. Uh, that will be held at the Strongsville Rec Center, uh, Friday, May 10th, as well as Friday, May 17th. Uh, so those are the, uh, timely information updates for this meeting.
Board of Education, other. Do we have any others? Meeting notification. A regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, May 9th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the meeting room right here. And then our next, uh, Board of Education meeting after that is May 23rd, 2024. This one will be at the auditorium of the Strongsville High School. In addition to our regular board meeting, we'll have our retirement recognition. We do have need for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee and to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Do I have a motion?
Sumoed.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 9:40 PM. We have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention and have a nice evening.